Good evening. Our October 24, 2019 City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our invocation and pledge will be led by members of the Longview Girl Scout Troop 1015 Haley Alexander and Olivia Sines. Haley Alexander is a nine-year-old, fourth grader at Pine Tree Burt's Elementary. She's a junior girl scout as part of the student council at school. Olivia Sines is an eight-year-old, third grader at Pine Tree Burt's Elementary. She's a Brownie-level girl scout and is part of the Burt's Beatles Music Club.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join us in the moment of prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for today. Thank you for bringing us together to do your work. Help us to remember that through our words and actions, we wish shine your light on our community. Watch over us as we travel home this evening. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ladies for joining us tonight. We really do appreciate you. Tonight in our employee recognition, I'm going to recognize someone that I'm sure you all know, but someone who, in the course of just his normal daily routine, performed an act of service that has touched many, many lives. And he probably doesn't even know that he even did this because it's just who he is. But I want you to please welcome John Eric Johnson up to the front. Look at that stunned look. You just thought you were here to hang out, didn't you?
Yeah, to support the chief.
Yeah, I know. Way to support the chief. Okay, I'm gonna tell you what took place. A few weeks back, John was called to the scene of an accident. And he had no idea who this accident involved, or who was involved with it, or what took place. But the act of service that he performed at this juncture of the day has changed lives and touched lives, and I just want you to know how much I appreciate it. John was called to the scene of an accident of a really good friend of mine. He's usually here every night, every council meeting, Ken Carter. Ken, now you know what I'm talking about, right? Okay, Ken is wheelchair-bound. He's been paralyzed for many, many years, and he has a specialized vehicle that he is able to use to drive that has wheelchair accessibility and hand controls and all those things. Well, this man here went so far beyond what his duties were to comfort Ken and to help Ken understand how things were gonna be okay, and he could even relate to Ken's situation because he has a child with similar situation where they require a specialized vehicle for that as well. And so, this is just above, this is not what we pay this guy to do. But that's so far above what we pay you to do. I just want you to know how much I appreciate that, and I know Ken appreciates it, and the people in Longview ought to appreciate the fact that you represent us and you do an amazing job. I just thank you so much for what you do, buddy. Thank you so much. You're the man. Thanks, man. Just couldn't appreciate it. I'm gonna talk to you all about our Go Giver Gala coming up. You all know what this is, I'm sure. It's our fundraiser we've had, this'll be our third year, where we raise money to do things for the community outside of our city budget. This is all private donations where we have an event, we recognize people, we honor some people, and we raised a bunch of money. And we use this money for various projects that we feel are important to the city. Our first year, we raised about $250,000, and we used it to our homeless initiative, which we felt was very important because we needed to, number one, address the situation and find some resolution, and I think we have done those things. It's an ongoing process, and I want that to continue because I think that's something that we can't ever close our eyes to. And so, we parlayed that into the second year where our goal was to clean up Highway 80 and to make Highway 80 a better thoroughfare in and out of Longview, which is what we need it to be because it's a huge artery that carries us east and west. And it used to be the showplace of Longview, and now it's not, and it needs to be that again. Because we're growing outside of our borders. We've expanded our city limits about as far as we can go in many directions. So, it's time for us to infill and fill in what we already have and take care of those things and build it back up to where it should be. So, last year's money, which is about $250,000 again, we dedicated to putting towards beautifying Highway 80 in some form or fashion. And this year, and we have a very specific project with that. We haven't spent any of that money yet, and the first year's money is pretty much spent. Last year's money is not spent because my goal is to use last year's money and the money that we're gonna raise this year to what I wanna call Bring Back Teague. Because I think Teague Park is a very important part of our community. It's a park in the middle of town. It's a park that could be a showplace if we would allow it to be. But it's a scary place at times because it's closed in, you feel claustrophobic, and you don't feel safe going there. So, our goal is to open up Teague Park to Highway 80, where it's an entrance into Highway 80, where it's open, you can see back through there. We'll do renovations inside the park. But I think it'll be a great way to make Teague Park a part of the community that we can all be proud and go to, and do things within Teague Park that make it really special. So, that's the goal of this year's gala, along with last year's as well, to beautify that. Because I feel that that's an area of commerce, and it's an area of business where we can see other people coming in and saying, "Okay, hey, I like what I'm seeing, so let's build a big hotel on Highway 80. Let's tear down these old buildings that are not being utilized, and let's put something up that's new and that's profitable and beneficial for the community." We've spent a ton of money downtown, making downtown a really, really neat place. We're gonna have apartments down there for people to live. We're gonna have things in downtown that are gonna require other businesses to come to supplement those people that are living there. So, why not expand that into Teague Park and Highway 80 and make this something that's really special? So, that's our goal for the year for Teague Park, for the Go Giver Gala. I hope you'll all join us. It's on January the 11th. It's at Moncom. It's a fun event. We honor people. We honor four individuals or four people there for their service to the community, and we raised a lot of money, and it's a fun time. So, if you haven't gotten tickets, please get them because they will sell out. We sell it every year. But it's a great event to come and see your neighbors and have fun, enjoy a good meal, and drink dancing and all those kind of things. And we have a great band. We have a band called Intensity this year, gonna be a live band playing for us. It's gonna be a lot of fun. So, I want you to come and join us for that. So, what I'm doing now is it's time to reveal some of our Go Givers for the year. So, we have four, as usual. Every year we have four Go Givers. This year, we're changing it just a little bit. What we're doing this year is we're going to, I'm going to honor legacy businesses here in this community. Businesses that have been so important to the vitality of the community, that have gone above and beyond in their sacrifice to the community, their giving, their generous spirits, their ability to make Longview a better place, the Never Say No businesses. When you go to them, they're always there in some form or fashion, and I think that is so important. So, we're gonna honor four legacy businesses this year. So, our first business this year we're gonna honor is Texas Bank and Trust because they've been such an amazing partner. The Pope family, Rogers Senior, Rogers Junior, all the family of Texas Bank and Trust have been a staple to our community. There's no event that goes on they don't have a hand in in some form or fashion. The Pope family are the most generous people. They're so unassuming that they don't even wanna be here to do this because that's not why they do what they do. They do what they do because it's the right thing for the community. But we have two people coming up. Come on up, you guys that helped me here. Kevin Hood, Jennifer Harris, they're gonna represent Texas Bank and Trust and the Pope family. Because I think that that family has done so many things for Longview, and it's time to recognize the commitment to everyone that works there. It's not just the Popes. It's a family of people that you know who they are, and they represent us, and I thank y'all so much for the support that y'all give the community, and it's just a great partnership. So, thank y'all so much for being here to represent the Popes, and we look forward to seeing y'all on January the 11th. It's y'all's job to make sure they're there, okay? Good. Thank you. My second business that I'm gonna honor this year is a little bit different. It's a legacy business, but it's a new legacy. Texas Bank and Trust is a legacy that's been here for many, many years. But this new business has been here less time, but it's so neat to see someone come and put it all out there and be successful at what they do. And the success that this business has provided for Longview, you see it every time a magazine comes out. Joycelyn, come on up. She had no idea. This is Joycelyn Fatamudji, whatever it is, yeah, with Infinite Plus Magazine. Come on, Joycelyn.
Oh, wow.
Okay, I want y'all to know about Joycelyn. I did not even know who Joycelyn was until about six years ago, when I started running for mayor, and everywhere I turned, she was there. And not just at that event, but every event. She covers Longview like a blanket. Her magazine portrays Longview the way it should be portrayed, in such a positive light, in such well-described terms. She's just, it's just who she is. And she's made such an impact in not only Longview, but South Longview with her education by design that is such a wonderful thing. Some of her children are here tonight. It's just a wonderful thing for Longview, and when people like Joycelyn take that chance and they risk it on Longview, it's time for us to risk it back and say, "Job well done, girl. Thank you so much. We're so proud of you."
Oh, my God.
So, we look forward to celebrating January 11th with Texas Bank and Trust, with Infinite Plus Magazine. I'll have two more at our next meeting that'll round out our four, but we're just thrilled to thank you and to be a part of this, and just know that we have such good things ahead of us. Thanks, girl.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
That's fun, isn't it? I really enjoy that. And I'm excited about what's coming up. I think we're gonna have a great event, as we have every year. So, I hope you all will, like I say, make plans to come and join us and enjoy the festivities and see what we have going on. We're at the citizen comment. I do have a speaker card.
Tommy Finkley, 3900 Hidden Hills Circle, Longview, Texas. But I'm moving, and I'm moving in your district.
I can't wait, Tommy.
I wanna bring something to the council's attention tonight, and Jimmy, I want Jimmy to kinda pay close attention too. Your city manager makes $187,000 a year. He gets $700 a month car allowance. He gets a one-year severance if he's let go of $187,000 in his contract. So, if you let him go, he gets $187,000 free money. He gets his life insurance paid for. He gets a $9,000 a year payment to his long-term retirement fund. And in your city manager's contract, and you can verify this with your city attorney, but it says and stipulates in your contract that you must reside in the city of Longview. So, I'm trying to understand why, Keith, in your contract, it says you need to live in the city of Longview, and in the city charter, it says you're supposed to live in the city of Longview. Yet, the property that you own in Upstate County is homesteaded. I don't know if you understand this, but they just changed the law, and you can't live, you cannot have a homestead exemption if you don't live in that house. So, my question to you and to the rest of the council is, you're paying a man over $200,000 a year who's supposed to be above reproach in every way. Yet, your contract says you're supposed to live in Longview. According to the Upstate County Appraisal District, you don't live in Longview because your property that you and your wife own on Bob White, that's where you have your homestead exemption. So, I think it's worth noting to the council, and if somebody starts asking questions, is the city manager abiding by your contract? So, you're either lying to this council, you're lying to your employer, or you're lying to the taxpayers, or you're lying to Upstate County for the benefit of some taxes. And this is going on, this is going on for the second year. 2018, when you were hired, and now we're into 2019, going into 2020. So, you've been receiving benefits from Upstate County Appraisal District for homestead exemption, but your contract and our city charter says you're supposed to live in Longview. I think you need to do some, answer some questions to the people that employ you, and may possibly to Upstate County.
I have another speaker card. Would you like to follow that? Me either. Okay, very good. We're to presentation items. We're to present a proclamation designating October 24th as World Polio Day in the city of Longview. I have Ms. Karen Maines, President of the Longview Grexton Rotary, Gaye Bennett, President of the Rotary Club of Longview, and Christina Hellworth, President of Longview Midtown Rotary. Y'all, please come forward.
I'm not Gaye Bennett.
Well, I didn't think so, but I knew you were there.
Gaye could not attend this evening.
That's okay. We'll take all of y'all.
All of y'all.
Come on up.
Stanley, Texas.
Come on up. Okay. I like you right here where you are. I fight it every week. World Polio Day, October 24, 2019. Whereas Longview Grexton Rotary Club is requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize October 24, 2019 as World Polio Day in the city of Longview. Whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. In 1985, Rotary launched Polio Plus, and in 1988, helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize the children of the world against polio. So, therefore, I am the mayor of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview, proclaim October 24, 2019 as World Polio Day in Longview. That's a lot of reading, but let me tell you what. That is an important, important disease that needs to be eradicated. And you all, with this awareness and the opportunity that's out there, we just gotta keep the fight up. I thank y'all for what you do. Thank the Rotary Club. You know, we keep pushing forward, pushing forward. One of these days, we'll be behind us, and that's what we're looking for. So, thank y'all for the continued support, the strong advocacy for such a horrible disease. And so, with your help and the help of these organizations that are involved here, I think we're on a great road to success. Thank y'all so much. Y'all are awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate y'all.
I just wanna say a quick word. We asked Ms. Shirley Griffin to come up here because she represents our Rotary District 5830 in the role of Polio Chairman. That's how many, 44 clubs in East Texas? 44 Rotary Clubs. We've got a lot of Rotarians here that they're kinda behind the scenes. We've got Steve Pirtle, David Wright, our city manager. We've got Laura, Donna Sharp, Donna Curner, there's Sarah Fox, there he is, Michael Shirley. Who else is out there? Chief, all of us, and who else?
Scott. Scott Karen back there.
Jimmy, Scott Karen, all of these Rotarians in the room. Who is a Rotarian in the room?
Y'all, nobody left here after the demonstration.
Yeah, I'll stay. You know why I did this? I mean, yes, it's Polio Day. It's World Polio Day every October 24th, every year. But I was in a situation last week where I was speaking to another health professional, a 44-year-old health professional. I told her what was coming up this week, and she asked me, "What is an iron lung? What is that?" A health professional that doesn't know what an iron lung is, and that made perfect sense to me when I realized she was born after we were getting the sugar cubes and the shots. Shirley's a polio survivor. It's still in the world. We've got four times the number of cases in the world this year than last year. It's a plane ride away. People be aware, these diseases are not cured, they're vaccinated against. Thank you.
Thank y'all so much. Keep up the good work, ladies. Appreciate y'all.
We will.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
My next proclamation is designating Domestic Violence Awareness Day in the city of Longview, and I have representatives from the Women's Center of East Texas here. Come on up. How are y'all? Good to see y'all. Come on up here. Domestic Violence Awareness Day, October 24, 2019. Whereas Women's Center of East Texas has requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize October 24, 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Day in the city of Longview. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly, the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cut across all economic, racial, and social barriers, and are supported by societal indifference. So, therefore, I am the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview, proclaim October 24, 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Day in Longview. You know, every year we do this one, and every year, it breaks my heart when I read this and I think of the gamut that this covers, because it covers everybody. The children, the elderly, the young, the old, every race, every religion, everybody. So, this is not something that's subject to just one group or one individual or one socioeconomic region. It covers us all. So, once again, awareness is the most important thing, and that's what this is, Awareness Day for domestic violence. And you know, the more we keep this in the forefront, the more people will understand that we do fight it, and we do not tolerate it, and we're not gonna stand for it. So, maybe it will not be as prevalent in our community as it has been in the past. So, y'all keep up the good work. Y'all do a great job. I appreciate y'all so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Y'all are awesome. Thank y'all so much. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Matt, council members, Mr. Bonds, good evening. Since the last time that we've met, we've had the opportunity in the police department to recognize some of our employees for their tenure awards for this year. I'd like to congratulate Detective Gabe Downs for 15 years, Officer Kevin Rankin for 15 years of service, Detective Terry Davis for 35 years of service, Officer Jason Kelly for five years of service, and Leah Garcia and our Public Safety Communications for 10 years of service. Also not pictured here is Sergeant Kerry Higginbotham with 10 years, Sergeant Dennis Phillips with 10 years, Officer Alan Whitlock with 10 years, Officer Cedric Davis with 15 years, and Officer Anthony Minyard with 15 years of service as well. So, I wanna congratulate all those officers and employees on their tenure awards. So, last week, we had an opportunity to graduate three of our citizens' police academies that we present every year. We graduated our business citizens' police academy. We had 21 students that represented several different businesses here in town, and I'd like to thank these businesses for allowing their employees to come and participate and learn a little bit more about our police department. Dollar General, Longview ISD, Bowen Chiropractic, Morgan Stanley, Target, Longview Regional, Texas Bank and Trust, Pine Tree ISD, Highway 80 Rescue Mission, Kamatsu, Longview News Journal, Eastman Chemical, Telco Credit Union, Spring Hill ISD, Longview Christian Church, Gans and Smith Insurance, Christus Good Shepherd, and Contrara Networks. So, appreciate those businesses allowing our employees to come spend some time with us during lunch hour to learn a little bit more about that, about our agency. We also had our regular citizens' police academy that we run in the fall of each year. We had 20 students in that class, and again, wanna thank them for taking their time to come and learn a little bit more about our department. We also finished up our Spanish citizens' police academy that we held, and I'd like to give a special thanks to Diana and Francisco Pittman of Revolutionized Lives Church on Green Street. They helped Myra Villal facilitate this citizens' police academy, and got to go down, spend some time with them, and appreciate them taking their time again, too, to come and spend some time with us as well. Last Friday, we had three new recruits graduate from Tyler Junior College Police Academy. They were Dylan Hartsfield, Colby Price, and Ashley Rouse. Wanna give a special congratulations to Dylan Hartsfield. He was the class valedictorian out of the group of the individuals that were in that academy. So, they graduated the academy, and today, we commissioned them. So, today, they had their commissioning ceremony and received their badges, and wanna congratulate them as the newest members of the police department, and they will be getting out into the field training program sometime here in the very near future. So, a little bit of a twist here. Each year, we participate with Laterno Athletics Department in their celebrity softball tournament. This year, usually, we pit off against the police versus the fire. Kinda had a little bit of a different twist. This year, we combined a team with police and fire, and our team and police and fire is on the left side of the picture there. And the other team on the other side there is the Tyler Police and Fire Department. So, each one of the two teams made it to the final game for the championship. I will say this, we played a good game. We were leading, but the Tyler Police and Fire came back and they beat us by one run. It was 18 to 17.
Wow.
But we had a good time, and it was a good fundraiser for Laterno, and something that we enjoyed participating in each year. So, then, myself and three firefighters from Station 6 teamed up again, and we were judges in a chili cook-off at Colonial Village. Went up there on a cool day and was able to help them. Their staff had a chili cook-off, and we got to taste four or five different kinds of chili and pickled winter, and appreciate them inviting us up there. It's always good to go up there and spend some time with our retirement community and kinda visit with them and help them out a little bit as well. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Bishop? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
For consent agenda, yes. Would anyone like to pull something off of consent agenda for separate discussion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now to action items, considering a resolution authorizing a tax abatement agreement between the city of Longview and Aon Coil.
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to come before y'all. We're extremely excited and very honored that Aon Coil considered to do their expansion project here in Longview and South Longview. We were competing with at least one other city for this project, so we were extremely fortunate, and we appreciate Aon's confidence in locating their project here in Longview. What I have before y'all tonight is a request to consider approval of a 50% tax abatement over 10 years for the project as part of their incentive package. The Longview Economic Development Corporation has contributed 1.25 million to the project, spread out in payments. Still, even again with the incentives considered, that's a net benefit to the city of Longview for about 4.5 million over the 10 years. So, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that y'all may have on the project.
Any questions, Mr. Mansfield? Mr. White?
I just want to say congratulations on the work that you're doing with Aon, and also to acknowledge them. They are in District 3, but not only are they located in District 3, they play a major role in that community. And I've toured the facility several times. I've met the, the executive staff, and I've met people working there, and it's really refreshing to see a company such as Aon employ people from District 3. And so, there are a lot of people that work there that are able to walk to work, ride bicycles to work, and things of that sort. So, kudos to you and your staff, and also to Aon. Thank you, mayor.
They are, they're a very big community partner. They're very active in the East Texas Manufacturing Academy. They're very involved. They're also one of the participants in our Big Tex program. They'll be coming up, I believe, in February, so they're a great partner with us.
Yes. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Someone?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Consider all matters incident related to the issuance of a sale of the city of Longview, Texas Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Refunding Bonds. Mr. John Martin, Hilltop Securities. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, mayor, council. John Martin with Hilltop Securities with me this evening, again, is Michael Martin. We've got for consideration this evening, ordinance that sets forth parameters for the potential sale of water and sewer system revenue refunding bonds. This would take advantage of lower interest rates to you and give an opportunity to refund the Series 2011 bonds that, that are outstanding in the amount of about $4.4 million. We project the savings to be, at this time, given current market, about $50,000 per year that is on the water and sewer side. These are, these are not general obligation bonds like we sold earlier in the year. These are different. They're water and sewer revenue bonds. So, the issue goes out to 2029. There's no extension of debt, anything like that. It's just pure cash flow savings to the enterprise fund. The calendar is, is we hope that, we hope to go to market November 13th and close the first week of December. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Martin? I know Mr. Moore would be asking questions if he's here because he's not here, so that makes it shorter.
He'll find a way to ask him, I'm sure.
But, yeah, he already asked him three minutes. We've already had this conversation this week before he left to go out of town, but he assured me that he was in favor of this, and everything was looking good, and it was a great opportunity for the city to...